All right. I'd like to introduce myself, Jim Burtis, as new chairman of the zoning board of appeals. We have Mark Woody, along with Wendy Rodriguez and Mary Ann Cavalero and Keith Halwick over here. And we also have our counsel, Rich Krogan, and bill the inspector Walt Welch. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if anyone has arrived tonight for an item that was formerly on the agenda, Forty Adams Avenue, that's been deferred to next month's meeting. Okay. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. We already went through the members present, and let's see, we'd like to move to public here.
First item on the agenda being the applicant.
First item on the agenda would be the applicant. If you would like to, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the members, council. My name is Philip Dropkin. I'm with the firm of Fabricant Lippman and Frischberg. I'm here representing Orange Terrace Properties LLC in their application for a variance. I know that I would like to also to be aware that I have been the chairman of the town negotiation ZBA, and I am currently the chairman, deputy chairman of the planning board. So I am not insensitive to the issues that you have to wrestle with, nor am I insensitive to the concerns of the members of the community.
Thank you.
I have brought this with me before I start the more formal part of my presentation. The yellow is, the yellow shows the homes that would be, the lots that would be subject to the subject variance application. They are 50 feet frontage on Orange Terrace Lane. The orange shows the other homes in the neighborhood that are also have 50-foot frontage. The point being is that the variance being requested in the respect of the width of the facing it would have on the Orange Terrace would be consistent with the community and would not destroy the character of the neighborhood. Now, I understand from looking at the YouTube from last meeting, people are very agitated. They're concerned about water, they're concerned about sewer, they're concerned about traffic. Water and sewer is clearly going to be an issue, an engineering issue that should, and I would expect, be reviewed by the planning board and referred over or not to the common council. Issues of traffic likewise should follow that format and that process. May I show this to the audience?
Sure.
Sure, you could probably turn it around so that, I think the board is familiar with this.
One second. This is all the cemetery.
Okay.
So having said that, the matter before you following, comes to you following a recommendation from the planning board to the city council to deny the applicant's request to erect six one-family homes in each of lots, two through seven, in section 33, block four. We now seek your consideration to erect one-family homes on each of the lots because otherwise, and for among other reasons, the building of the road extension, which will be undertaken at the expense of the applicant, would make the project cost prohibitive. I did speak with the applicant today, and he told me that since he was prepared to commence the construction of the project, and he thought it was December of '21, construction costs have gone up 40 percent. So if you sell more homes, you get more of a return. In this case, he tells me it's a necessity. Lots four through seven would have 50-foot frontage on an extension road to be constructed by the applicant at its expense. Lots two and three each have 44-foot frontage for a shortage of 12 percent from the 50-foot frontage. And each of these would be buildable as a pre-existing non-conforming lot, but for the applicant mistakenly having purchased the lots in the name of one company. Significantly, the neighborhood, as shown on the diagram that I just showed you, is 75 percent developed with homes having 50-foot frontage or less. Therefore, the lots proposed would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood and would have no adverse impact due to the frontage size. I should clarify one thing. Not all of these homes, not all of these lots have homes on them. I want it be, I want you to be clear about that. But they are lots with 50-foot frontage, the ones that were in orange, I believe, orange. Under section four of the cities, of the general city law, section 81B, in making a variance determination, the ZBA is to consider the benefit to the applicant, if granted, weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood by the grant. To do so, a five-factor test is applied. Notwithstanding the fact I have sat years on the ZBA, I apologize, I can't recall these unless I look at what the five-factor test is. First, and these are to be weighed, if one, you may decide that item one is satisfactory, item two isn't. At the end of, you have to, at the end of your analysis, consider all of the factors and make your determination. Number one is whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created. Number two, whether the benefit to the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance that is sought. Three is whether the area variance is substantial. Four, whether the proposed variance would have an adverse effect on the physical conditions of the neighborhood. And five is whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, which consideration is not necess, or shall not necessarily preclude the granting of an area variance. Variance we're seeking, the permitted as of right variance right now is 75 feet. We're looking to remain with the existing plots at 50 feet. As to number one, we feel that there is no change to the character of the neighborhood as 75 percent of the lots have 50-foot road frontage, and the house, and the lots, and the houses to be built on them are on a dead end, a cul-de-sac that would abut against the cemetery at the end of Orange Terrace Road. The bulk requirements, the bulk requirements are met in excess of 7,500 square feet. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method more feasible for the applicant to pursue unless the neighboring cemetery sells off some land. We have pursued that. We have not gotten a response to their interest in selling perhaps more land, in which case we could put up the six homes and be more in compliant or fully in compliant with the The variance is not substantial in the light of the neighboring properties having 50-foot The variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The district is zone R1, and there will be accordingly one family home on each lot.
Mr. Dropkin?
Yes.
Just to interrupt you for a minute. On number three, whether the requested variance is substantial, what was your answer?
The substance, the variance is not substantial in light of looking at the impact that it would have on the neighborhood.
But looking at the lot itself?
I, looking at the lot itself, I would be hard-pressed to tell you it wouldn't be substantial.
Okay.
Okay. And number, I blew them up to number five. The alleged difficulty is not self-created, as the lots had frontage of 50 feet, and the cost of construction is up 40 percent from when the applicant was ready to start construction. In any event, this last item of self-creation, it does not preclude on the statute the grant of a variance. It is a factor, as the others are, to be considered. That's my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have two questions for you.
Sure. Before you do that, why don't we open the public hearing?
Okay. Fair enough. And actually, before we even do that, I would just like to ask whether the applicant did the mailing, and if Martina can confirm.
We have done it, and I have the affidavit of mailing with me.
Do you have the original with you?
Yes.
Can you have it, please?
Sure.
Can somebody remove the signs and screen the people?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yes.
I'd like to open the public hearing, and I would like to remind the public that if you do come up and speak, that you would need to, please let us know your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jamie Cupelo. I live in the affected neighborhood. I live at 46 West Conkling Avenue in Middletown. I talk to a lot of my neighbors in that area. A lot of them work in the city, they work nights, they would have been here, but they just can't. They have kids, they have responsibilities. What I find, and I'm opposed to this project, number one, there's a housing shortage in Middletown and all around. Regular people just want to build a house. But what happened in my very own backyard is a developer unbeknownst to myself bought my backyard and said, oh, oh, it's unbuildable. So that whole area in there is being bought up by developers speculating, sitting on these properties for years, and said, okay, let's, you know, let's, let's make a profit. But regular people want to live and work in Middletown. I used to work in a homeless shelter for years. I worked with people who couldn't afford a place to live. I worked with Habitat for Humanity. People need places to live. This is being done to make a lot of money, whereas we're doing a fundraising project right now in Middletown just to buy a disabled person a house to live, you know? And there's so many people who need housing, you know? Many times I've worked with, at the homeless shelter, helping, volunteering, at the soup kitchen, people just need a place to live. And what's happening in Middletown, speculators, there's plenty of land to develop housing projects like this, but they don't want to pay a lot of money. They don't want to pay the proper infrastructure, road development, all that. They just want to make a fast money. So what I also find environmentally in my backyard and the surrounding areas, which is now woods, but was already bought up, is when you clearcut all these areas, water comes downhill. My neighborhood is downhill from this project, water comes down. Already my basement is, is completely, it gets flooded and flooded. Nobody addresses this. People are like, oh, well, so you, you have a nice swimming pool in the bottom of your house, that's a plus. No, it's not. So, you know, we are affected. You know, this is a wildlife buffer between the cemetery, and so you have deer running all over the place in people's backyards, up and down the street. Wildlife is definitely being displaced, the water table's being displaced, human beings who live here are being displaced. Also, someone could make money. I would like to see projects in the town that represent the people, the income level, and, and sustainability that can support this region. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could just make sure the comments are kept to the five factors, please, when you come up, and please feel free to come up.
How are you doing? My name is Jason Lichtenstein. I live at 1 Clinton, 1 Clinton Street. My house sits on Orange Terrace. When this came, first came to our attention, we met with Jacob up at, up on the block there, and we talked about it. One of the concerns that he had when we were talking about it was trying to find past precedents that would potentially stop this. And a lot of the neighbors had information that backed past precedents that was letting them know they had to build on a 75-foot lot, 75-foot of road front, 75 feet of road front lot. At the time, we couldn't come up with anything, and since then, we've done our research, and we found that there was a meet, there was a meeting, there's only board appeal meeting that took place here, September 11th, 1992, I believe. Hold on, confirm that. And, and that hearing, it came down to Jack Stack and his company trying to build on the, on the lots up on Clinton, on Orange Terrace. At that time, he was trying to build houses on 50-foot lots. There was clearly something that was blocking him, he had to apply for a variance. He came to the board, he came to the board of appeals and was denied that variance. We know he was denied that variance because across the street from my house now sits two houses, not three. And had he won the appeal, they would have built three houses there. Clearly, in 1991, I believe it was 91 there, was the meeting, he lost his appeal. When I reached out and spoke to the family, they confirmed that they lost the appeal, they confirmed they lost out on the ability to build the three houses they so chose. They didn't really remember what the reason why to it was, but we have the, I have the copy of the, the letter here that had the minutes, or that had the meeting, and it didn't have the actual minutes attached to it.
Are you talking about the three homes on the corner of Corwin and Orange Terrace?
No, so right, so I live at 1 Clinton Street, so the corner of, the paper road of Clinton Street, and across from me on Orange Terrace, there are two homes there. Those addresses are?
Seventeen dash nineteen and nineteen, no, it's seventeen through 21.
Yeah, because they split them up. So seventeen through nineteen, through 21, West, um, West?
Orange Terrace.
Orange Terrace was where they applied for the initial appeal, because they wanted to go 17, 19, 21. They were denied this appeal because they didn't have the appropriate road front allotment to build a house on it. The other issue, so when you looked at it, they had 288 feet of road front. Clearly, the last two lots don't even have 50 feet. So to even ask to build on a lot that doesn't even have 50 feet of road front, when you're trying to make that your case, it sends up red flags all of its own. But there's other issues that we do have along with this. We looked at the turnabout that was put in there at one point, and then we know that from the one meeting to the next meeting, the turnabout was changed in there. We have concerns with the DPW trucks and their ability to turn around, a fire truck, its ability to turn around, or even a basic delivery truck and its ability to turn around on a road like that. The trucks can't turn around now. So now you double the length of that dead end. How are you asking these trucks to back up? How are you asking these trucks to turn around? How are you maintaining a safe quality of life for the people that live there when the trucks can't even properly get out of the, the dead end? Couple of years ago, when we first bought the house, one of my concerns was, my house lives, sits at 1 Clinton Street. Nobody could find 1 Clinton Street because it sits on a paper road. The address would bring you to the bottom of the hill. So when we were trying to get our address changed to Orange Terrace, I had a conversation with one of the fire chiefs, and I explained to him, like, my concern is what happens if there's an emergency? How do I guarantee people are going to get there? And he said, oh, what kind of emergency are you thinking about? I said, let's say my house catches on fire. He said, with the water pressure you got up there, if your house catches on fire, get your stuff out of there, because you're, because the fire, the water pressure is not sustainable to put the fire out. Um, now, is that true or not? I don't know, but I know if I want to water my lawn, I have to put a pump in to get enough water out there just to water my lawn. What happens with six additional houses? And this is a concern that we've brought up multiple times. I'm not sure where it goes from there. Our other concern was the road. Our road is 30 feet wide. This road is being proposed at 25 feet wide. I understand that somebody's trying to make money on this, but they shouldn't be allowed to cut corners when they're trying to make money on this. The road that's being built should have to match the road that's already there. The road should not be allowed to be narrowed. What happens during a snowstorm, if somebody's parked on the road? What happens during an emergency, if somebody's parked on the road and a vehicle can't get through, because you now have a road that's five foot less with a car parked on the road, and an emergency vehicle needs to get from one side to the other? How does that, how does that vehicle then turn around to get back out? We've also watched DPW trucks crash into the retaining wall across the street from me at the broker residence, just trying to back out. You now double the length of the road. You know, like, not having the turnabout properly sized at the end is a concern. You know, but the end of the day, our biggest concern is nobody's trying to tell anybody what they can or can't build, we're just trying to make sure everybody's following the same rules. A lot of the houses that were built there that he has highlighted in orange were built prior to this zoning board of appeals in 1991. Whatever changed in this minute established past precedents moving forward. Some of those properties aren't even developed. You know, just from quickly looking at it, they're not even developed lots. They probably won't end up being developed lots. But on top of that, some of the highlighted lots, highlighted lots there sit on Clinton Street, the paper road of Clinton Street. We know right now that there's a gentleman going around buying those lots, every other lot, under different LLCs, because he understands there's a loophole in the rules that says that if he's landlocked, he can build on a 50-foot lot. But it's the same guy buying those lots. While he's trying to circumvent the law, it's kind of the, the job of the zoning board and the common council to see through this, like, see through what's happening there. It does decrease the quality of life in a neighborhood. No different than years ago, when the zoning board at the time approved the houses on Wickham Avenue that were gorgeous, large family houses, to be divided up into four or five family houses. And what happened in that neighborhood? You overcrowded a neighborhood with a lot of renters, and the crime rate ran up in that neighborhood, because you had too many people living in a small area. What happens in this area when you put too many people in a small area? There are 17 lots, I believe, in the woods. So now you let these six houses go, 17 lots there, you added 23 families in a small area. What happens to the quality of life of the people that live there? Part of the job of the zoning board is to have vision as to what's going to happen in the community and the neighborhood moving forward. I question what happens if you put 23 houses in a small lot? And that's a concern of ours, too. Building in that neighborhood and buying in that neighborhood, we liked the spatial, the space of, of the neighborhood, much like Presidential has that wide-open area. That's the appeal that we have back there. We're trying to maintain our quality of life that we've built and we've worked for in that part of Middletown. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Maria Jachimong. I live at 2 Clinton Street, and I also had to follow that rule with my property. I had two properties on Clinton Street, which were both 50-foot lots, and when I wanted to build my house on the front lot, so I could have a big yard, I was told I couldn't, because I have to follow the rules. So you have this developer come into our, our area, and why should he be an exception to the rule that everyone before, since 1991, had to follow? Is it because he hired an attorney? When we can't afford an attorney? I don't think that's right. All the houses on Orange Terrace are within the required space, 75 square feet. To say that all the other houses are not, it's not true. We're, like, we don't want, you want to build a house, build the house, but build three, not six, because we want our area to still look like what it is. Don't change it, just because you're trying to make a buck at the end of the day. And at the end of the day, it's really not our concern how much construction costs have gone up. We care about the neighborhood. These, these developers don't care about where we live, they just care about the bottom line, and I don't think that's right. They should abide by the law that everyone else has already abided by. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Peter Broker. I live in 27 Orange Terrace. I bought property on Orange Terrace back in the 60s, and at that time, they were 50-foot lots. Well, I wanted to build a house there, and they told me I had to subdivide the property and make sure that it's at least a 75-foot lot. Now, we're going back to the 70s now. So that's what I had to do. I don't see how we can get away from that at this particular point. I mean, most of the properties on Orange Terrace are 75-foot lots.
Excuse me, sir. How many lots did you own when you bought them?
Originally, I owned three lots, three 50-foot lots.
And how many lots did you end up getting?
I wound up purchasing 25 feet from my parents that lived there, and I built two houses then on that property.
So you combined the lots?
Yes. That's what I had to do. That was the rules. You know, Commissioner Fusco was in power then, along with Ellington Bradford, and there was no ifs or buts. Had to be done. Now, why are we going through this 50-foot lot business? I have no idea. And my main concern, if you allow this 50-foot lot on Orange Terrace, there's all this property on Clinton Street, all those lots are 50-footers. But we already have a person that buys every other lot under a different name. So I can see what's going to happen there. It's crazy.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Louis Villafane, and I live at 19 Orange Terrace, and that's one of the properties that Jack Stack wanted to build, three houses, and he was forced to build two. All I'm asking is that if the law back then, or the rules back then, were applied to us and we had to follow that, so should this developer has to follow that rule. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking to put no houses. You have 288 feet there, good enough to subdivide and have three nice, good homes, maintaining the same, because if you go on Orange Terrace, you ain't going to see, whatever you said, what, 75 percent are 50-foot lots? No. I would say that almost 99 percent on Orange Terrace are on 75 or more. That's all I'm asking. I'm asking to be fair, apply the law like you did back then, apply now. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Donald Fagan. I live at 44 West Conkling. I agree with my other neighbors. If the law is good for one, it should be good for all. The applicant was aware of the zoning issues when he purchased the property. If he wasn't, that's his fault for not doing his diligence. So if you're aware of the law and you buy the property anyway, you should abide by the law. The, I also- The, I also agree with the, the situation where, if we allow the applicant this variance, it will snowball into the so-called Paper Road of Clinton, which I do own a lot on. And it'll, it'll overcrowd Clinton, and it'll, it'll make other problems besides traffic and, and such. And then again, as my, my neighbor Jamie mentioned, drainage is an issue. You know, since, since, I've lived there since two thousand and four, and I've seen some houses have been built. And I don't begrudge anybody building a house on a legal buildable lot, which apparently is seventy-five foot of road frontage. And that has affected the drainage in the neighborhood immensely. So another six houses i- is gonna affect the drainage tremendously. And then if the additional houses get built on Clinton, because if we allow one variance, they're invariably gonna cite that situation as a precedent and, and try to force the city into allowing a variance on the other seventeen lots, or whatever it is on Clinton. And that's just gonna wreak absolute havoc with drainage for all of West Conklin and Clinton. So also, even if, if they only move forward with three houses, and they adhere to the seventy-five feet of frontage, I believe there needs to be some remediation of stormwater. Because as of now, you know, our driveway can become unusable if we have a thaw and refreeze situation due to the way that the water drains off the side of the hill into Jamie's backyard, and then it runs down my driveway. So, even i- if they are able to move forward in some shape or form, I do believe that there needs to be some kind of stormwater remediation. Detention pond, pipe it into the, to the, to the city stormwater system, or something of that nature. So in closing, you know, if Peter Broker wasn't allowed to build on a fifty-foot lot, if the stacks weren't allowed to build on a fifty-foot lot, why is the applicant, why should the applicant be granted a variance to be allowed to build on a fifty-foot lot? There seems to be quite a history of precedence for people not being allowed to build on a fifty-foot lot. So I don't see any reason to, to circumnavigate the seventy-five-foot lot requirement. And I don't believe that construction costs are the city's concern, and it doesn't create a hardship for the, for the applicant. The applicant created his own hardship by purchasing lots that were non-conforming. He should have known that ahead of time, and he should have budgeted for that. That's all I have to say. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you.
My name is Alexandra Santa Maria. I live in Forty-seven West Conklin. I had the blessing, the twenty years ago, I moved off one of those new houses in the ti- in that area. And my whole point right here is now what everybody is so esper. I just want you guys, all of you are working for the town, and thank you. My whole point of moving to this area is to grow my family in a quieter, safety, and a family ambience. I want you guys to keep that in mind when you go back home, and how comfortable you live in your area. Just keep it in mind that this person just wants to create money. We all care, all my neighborhood is being requested. I really appreciate that you think about, of the quality, because now that my children I raise, I hope my grandchildren will be able to enjoy the peacefulness area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I forgot one item. As for notification of the public hearings, I received a certified, a notice of a certified letter for the first public, the first public hearing. And the mail carrier left the notice on my door on the sixth. The meeting was on the seventh. So by the time I got home from work at five o'clock, the post office wasn't open. By the time I got the, the letter, I actually had to have my mother-in-law go get the letter for me. And so I, I, I got home, I, I worked late that night, I got home at six-thirty, quarter to seven, and to find out that there was a public meeting then. And, and
You're talking about the common council meeting?
Yes, yes. And then, and then the, the notice for this meeting was, I think, merely just a couple of days ago. So, I, I don't feel that's enough notice. I don't know if there's something in the rules of, of the planning board that requires a set timeframe for the notices. But the notices for me made it very difficult for me to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public would like to speak? Martina, were there any letters that were sent in?
No.
Do we have any speakers online?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
You can keep the public hearing open.
Okay.
We did have to send the plans to the county for their comments as well. So the public hearing will be kept open. But maybe the board has some comments they'd like to make, or questions to ask the applicant?
Do any board members have any questions?
I have a question. You said for the request that you're asking for the percentage, for the variance, you said it would only be twelve percent?
If, from the prior fifty, fifty-foot frontage.
So for a
So the fifty to forty-four feet would be a twelve percent differential.
Okay. But for a seventy-five?
Be a bigger differential.
Okay. Just want to make sure you're aware.
Oh, yeah.
So if we can just go through these factors with you for a moment?
And can I just say a couple of things?
Sure.
In, in doing that, and in response to the public's concerns and comments, I think that one thing I would urge the board and the public to take into consideration is the location of where these homes would be. They are on a dead end, abutting against a cemetery. They are not likely, because I don't know the location, of the other applicants who were denied fifty-foot builds in nineteen ninety-two, or whatever, whenever it might have occurred. These, more likely than not, were in the middle of a street. This is off, at the end of Orange Terrace Road, isolated from the rest of the commu- community. The other thing is that the applicant is undertaking at substantial cost, unlike, likely unlike other applicants, to build a road extension. The road extension, a year and a half ago, was seven hundred thousand dollars. That was the estimate they received. If you compute that out of forty percent, it's close to a million dollars now. That is a, those two are distinguishing factors that I asked you to take into consideration during your deliberations.
Sure. So, going to factor number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. In light of the comments that you heard tonight, how would you respond?
You know, I, 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 water pressure, turnabout, remediation of stormwater, these, to me, are engineering issues. That should be, and definitely ought to be, addressed through the planning board process, their review, and then their referral to the, to the common council for their disposi- disposition. We would fully expect, as with any development, that water issues, traffic issues, width of roadway, turnabout, remediation of stormwater, they all should be addressed. And they're appropriate concerns. But I think that they, were you to proceed, you can make these conditions of any approval, that these matters be addressed. And they are appropriately addressed, as I understand your structure, the city's structure, with the planning board review and, and the common council review.
Going to the next one, well, just going back to that, on the location map that I have on Orange Terrace.
Yes.
You're talking about lot, what I have is eight-point-one, ten-point-two, twelve, fourteen, and sixteen, as being the ones with homes built on them. Just on that side of the street. Eight-point-one has a hundred-foot of frontage. Ten-point-two has a hundred-foot of frontage. Twelve has seventy-five. Fourteen has a hundred. And sixteen has seventy-five. The only lots non-conforming
On which street is that?
On the Orange Terrace side of the street. Is lots one through seven. Now, Lot One is fifty feet for cemetery. So the only non-conforming lots are two through seven.
Yes.
Which your client owns.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Going to, to number two, on the five factors, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method. So, you, your client bought one of the lots and put it in a different LLC, but if you combined those six lots, wouldn't you be able to have the correct road frontage for three lots?
You, you would have the correct road frontage for three lots, yes. But that would limit the number of homes.
Right, but that's not a factor for the board to consider.
Well, we're asking for the variance, because were we limited to the three homes? The road improvements and the homes would be economically infeasible.
But, another method would be to combine the lots to get three lots, and then be in compliance with the code.
I'm, I'm not entirely following that.
Another method, so that's what it says, whether the benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by some other method. So if your guy that owns the six lots, one being in a different name, was to put them all in one name, he could then build three homes and comply with the city with seventy-five foot, at least seventy-five foot of road frontage?
Right, he could build three homes, but that would make the project not economically feasible.
Okay. Number three is whether the requested variance is substantial. I think we went over that with you needing at least twenty-five on four lots, and, or twenty-five feet and twenty-nine feet on the other lot. Or forty-four and seventy-five, thirty-one on the other two.
That's right.
So you're at least at thirty-three percent.
Right.
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. In light of the public's comments, how do you respond?
I respond by stating that the proposed construction is on a cul-de-sac, removed at the, at the end of Orange Terrace Lane. It is six homes in a neighborhood that has maybe hundreds of homes. I don't think that the few homes that are being sought for in the variance would have an adverse impact on the neighborhood.
Well, environmental conditions in the neighborhood, I think you heard a couple comments
The issue, again, is, I think, these engineering matters, that should be addressed and are appropriate, appropriate to be raised.
Okay. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Obviously, that being relevant, but not necessarily preclusive.
Yeah, right.
So your client bought these lots, would you agree, knowing that there's a fifty-foot, or seventy-five, I'm sorry, foot frontage requirement?
Actually, I don't think he knew. There was, when he bought it, there was a seventy-five-foot requirement.
Could have easily have checked, though.
He could have found out, but I'm responding to your question.
I understand.
Right.
May I say something? I have
Absolutely.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate everybody's being here and supporting. And I just want to clarify, first and foremost, I want to make sure that what we're looking at is accurate with what you have. That's accurate, this map? Because I'm just looking at the, how it's outlined, and most of them, just like you were saying, it seems like there is a fifty-foot-wide front yard on most of these properties. Right, which is what you said?
Yes.
I know it came into question with the community, but again, I just want to make sure what you have is what we have. What you referred to earlier on Orange Terrace, when you said a hundred, so let's say eighteen-point-one is a hundred, ten-point-two is at a hundred, fourteen is a hundred, those, if I'm not mistaken, because I went down there, are double lots. So they were fifty feet apiece. Most of this neighborhood are probably seventy-five percent, just from what I'm looking at, just as a matter of fact, were fifty feet for the lots. Legislation suggests that prior to the enactment of seventy-five-foot-wide requirement, Middletown was satisfied, just one, you know, facts, with a fifty-five-foot front yard. So that, and the fact, I just want to clarify, and just make sure we have some facts here before we, you know, just, again, most of those are fifty feet. I know people said they were seventy-five. Just according to my map, unless they've, have a double lot, there isn't anything with seventy-five. If anybody can dispute that, please, I'd like to hear.
Well, I think they had to combine lots, though.
They was combining lots.
Yeah.
Fifty-fifty.
Right.
So to your point, if they do two, it's a hundred, yeah.
Again, we were forced to subdivide. Yeah, they're fifty-foot lot. And if it's one owner, they were forced to build on seventy-five or a hundred feet. So I'm not disputing the fact that you say it's fifty-foot lot, but you're forcing us, or you force a pinhead, you force Jack Stack?
I'm sorry, you have to come up to the mic and speak if you're gonna make a comment. Please state your name again, I know you said it before, and your address.
Louis Villafane, Nineteen Orange Terrace. I agree with you, you said, most of those lots are fifty-foot lots, okay? And if you own more than one lot, okay, you were forced to subdivide. Just like Pete in seventy-three had a subdivide, and Jack Stack had a, a subdivide. So, yeah, it, it's, yeah, if you, if you go by what you're, the way you're stating it, yeah, there's all fifty-foot lots. But, you gotta apply that law that was back then, apply it today, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And as a matter of fact, lots four and five, do you know when they were purchased? I got a purchase date of three oh six. So Lot Four and Five, which would be seven and nine, if I'm not mistaken, and just to your point earlier about the ninety-one, I know laws have changed in zoning, but Lots Four and Five, purchased at oh six, can you verify that? March of oh six?
I will check.
And if I'm not mistaken, let's me go down the line here. Lots Two and Three were purchased in September of two thousand and twenty-one.
The Four and Five in oh six, you believe?
March of oh six. To be specific, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and six. And Lots Six and Seven were purchased before, Three and Four, which was February and May of two thousand and twenty-one. So four of those lots, four of the six were purchased in two thousand and twenty-one. And I think the original two was Four and Five, was kind of the middle of the parcel that we're talking about. I just want some clarification on that, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question for the applicant.
Sure.
What was your reason for withdrawing your application from common council?
Actually, I wish I could tell you. I wasn't involved with the matter at that time. I, I don't know, I know there was a lot of movement ahead and movement back. I, I am not aware of the reasons.
Turn it back to the You can turn it back to the public for comment. If you have a question for a public comment period, please step forward, state your name and address.
Maria Jachamlong. Going back to what you were pointing out about the purchases back in 2021, I actually did my research on it. And if you look at all the names, it's everybody just switching back and forth. They're like two years apart. So it can make it look like it's a constant new transaction to trying, they've been doing this back since 2006. Then it went to 2019, 2021. Like, think about it. Back in 7 Orange Terrace, it was sold back on March 5th, 2019 for $963. Like, really? Like, you can tell that these are properties just being switched back and forth. So you can see.
What was that purchase price again? On what property?
This, I have for 7 Orange Terrace.
7 Orange, yep.
Okay. It was sold on March 5th, 2019 to an Aris Strensel for $963, okay? Then it was sold again in February 17th, 2021 to a Thomas Bonafenti for $20,000. And then it repeats that at 9 Orange Terrace. And if you look at 11 Orange Terrace, everything is sold for $963 or $980. 13 Orange Terrace was sold on October 9th, 2013 for a dollar.
I have some numbers here. I want you to, I just want to run some numbers past you that I have.
Okay. Well, I mean, I got this off of the website.
That's fine.
I did my research a while ago.
I appreciate the facts.
We can compare this.
I just want to run, I just want to run the number past you just so I know. Because when I hear $900, I get alarmed. So I have lot number 7, 525, 2021, sold for $25,000.
Lot number?
I have lot number 6.
See, I haven't, hold on.
Okay. So when I hear low-ball numbers, I mean, obviously, as a board member.
I have them as the actual address. I'm not sure which lot number is exactly which one. I'm assuming that, okay. So lot number 3 is actually number 2 for me on, on the, on the map.
Okay, well, I have lot number 2 and 3 were sold on the same date for the same price. Do you have that?
For $1,760.
$17,600.
$600, yes. And that was on September 30th of 2021.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. If you have stuff that written down, if you wouldn't mind submitting that?
It got all my notes on it.
Okay, if you can make a copy, a clean version for us and submit that.
And I also wanted to add that the other properties that Jason mentioned on Clinton Street, that it's under a different LLC and a different individual, I can verify that those properties are strictly owned by the same person. And why do I say that? Because I used to work for the firm that represents the man. I'm not saying what firm it is, but I know it's the same person. So there's no detesting that. I just wanted to make you guys aware.
That's not before us.
No, I, no, I know, I understand that. But this is what happens and what we've noticed, that you buy a lot and you put it under a different name. Like, I have all this information here. And a lot is, Richard, you own this one, and Walt will own this one. And Richard, you're going to own the next one. But technically, Mark owns all of them. And this is what's happening.
I, I understand.
Okay. I'm just making it aware. And I'll make a copy of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker? Yes, counsel. Alderman.
Thank you, Jerry Kleiner, 13 Randall Heights. I just have two comments. And I'm really speaking more, not from the council, but as from the Historical Society. When I hear the cemetery referred to as "the cemetery" or its blocks, its impacts, because it runs into a cemetery, and even that they're trying to buy land from the cemetery. This is Hillside Cemetery from 1861, designed by Calvert-Box. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. And it is, to me, part of the consideration when you look at the surrounding neighborhood. So when you talk about environmental considerations, I think that probably protecting wildlife is not exactly in your consideration. But certainly, the noise and the encroachment and trying to buy land from the cemetery. The other thing is the cost of building the road. I would consider that a self-created hardship because you knew a road had to be built. And if the price to build it goes up, that's not the city's fault. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Lichtenstein, 1 Clinton Street. To your, your point about the 50-foot properties, where were those 50-foot properties? Just curious, where they were located? Are they in the immediate area? And are they develop, and are they developed land?
Immediate area.
And can you confirm whether or not they're developed land or they vacant lots?
It's a combination. I can't tell.
Because I'm going to tell you that they're vacant lots by looking at the map I have here. And while they are 50-foot lots, they haven't been built on. So that can't set a precedent moving forward when it's still woods. And in reference to the environmental factors on there, they came in and tore up the woods before the April 1st date they had to beat in order to prevent the bats from coming back. So they don't exactly have a track record of caring about the environment or the animals that live within it. So to act them, to ask them to act on good faith, that they're going to continue to do this moving forward, when they went through there with a backhoe with no regard to the neighbors, no regard to the noise variance, the police were called up there because they started working prior to the 7:00 AM time they were supposed to work. They tore down the trees and left the woods in shambles for months until another complaint had to be put in place for them to clean it up. Like, to act on, to, to think for any sentence that they're going to act on good faith is, is beyond me because they've already proven they're not going to. They put forth a plan, manipulated the plan when they went to the next level by changing the road lot, the road width, by changing the turnabout size. And then also, they've put their plan back in when they were already told 6 wasn't an option. They were told 4 was feasible, 5 was a stretch, 3 was realistic. They then completely ignored all that and wasted time of the board here to come back with 6 lots. But going back to the original point, the lots in question are not built. So yes, there's 50-foot lots there to be built upon or going to become 75-foot lots. And the question of why were they 100-foot lots and not 75-foot lots? Who would sell half of their lot? I wouldn't sell you half my lot. If you want my lot, you're going to buy it all for full asking price. So that's why the lots are at 50 feet. Because if they wanted to build their houses, I'm not going to be like, you know what? I'll give you 25 feet, and I'm stuck with this 25 feet I can never do anything with. That's why they're 100-foot lots. Because where do you get the other lotage from? They were stuck. They were told they had to build on a 75-foot or more frontage. That's what we did. I understand my lot is different because I sit on a corner lot, same as Maria. So our road frontage is a little bit different, which is also why I couldn't put my house onto Orange Terrace as I originally asked because I didn't have the road allotment that I needed. But what's being asked here is circumventing the law. If they didn't know it, that's their fault. You do your research. I knew when I, when I bought my house what the rules were. I spoke to the builder. He explained it to me. I understood. I asked questions. If I was going to invest potentially millions of dollars, I probably would have done more homework. The fact they didn't raises a whole lot of other questions. What kind of integrity are you going to get from the houses built? What kind of integrity are you going to get from how they're going to improve the community? How they're going to improve the neighborhood? The builder came and spoke to me. And he said, hey, think about the value of your house and how it's going to go up. Why would the value of my house go up? Because my neighborhood becomes overcrowded. The neighbor, the value of my house is going to continue to go up because any more living in a city to have that type of lifestyle is a rarity. That's why the value of my house would go up, not because you put six more houses, 12 more cars, 24 trips up and down the road. That's not going to increase the value of my house. And as our property taxes continue to rise, understandably, I want to make sure that property of my house is going to follow that. So when the time comes, if I choose to move, my value is still there on the property which I invested in, which is what my house is. My house is an investment. My property is an investment. This does not benefit my investment. This hurts my investment because it decreases the quality of life in our neighborhood. And then to speak to the cemetery, to be so nonchalant about it. If you go down into the woods, you see all the runoff's that are there. The house that sits next to my house on West Conkling used to be the main, used to be the main home front that lived up there. When it rains, you can still see the footage of the house there. When you go back into the woods, you can still see the steps they built, the gardens they built of all the stone and all those individual properties. There are streams that run off into the rivers or into the streams that run through the cemetery. They've put no consideration into what happens to the water that goes into that cemetery. What happens if that cemetery floods? What happens to the bodies that are built there, that are buried down there? As I'm sitting here, there are all questions that I'm thinking about if you don't pay attention to these things. Which clearly, it's an engineering issue. You're right. But it has to go before the zoning board because these are questions that have to be asked. And to expect them to operate under good faith when they've already proven they're not going to operate under good faith. It's a little beyond me to think that they're now going to turn a leaf to it when their number one concern is pushing off their shortsightedness of making a dollar onto the zoning board. That's not your concern. Your concern is the vision of the city, the vision of the town, and the vision of that community specifically. This hurts it. All right, thank you.
Sir, just a quick question. How much narrower, or narrower is the street proposed?
5 feet.
5 feet. 2 and 1/2? 5 on one side?
5 on one side. I drive a 2019 Dodge Ram.
It's a nice truck.
It is a very nice truck. It wouldn't fit.
Right.
If you parked the car on the side of that road, I'm not driving up and down that road, how am I turning around to get my car out of there? It wouldn't fit.
I can tell you just from being there. I was there today, I'll be honest with you. And I've been there a couple of times. And I saw, prior to this, there were some engineering problems that I noticed. One of them is if you've been on Orange Terrace, one thing I've never liked, there's an incline. If you were to guess 30 degrees, maybe? 25? It's an incline.
If you go stand in the cemetery
Correct.
and you look back towards my house, you can't see my house. That's how much the road drops down.
Right, so if you were on the, the street above, you wouldn't be looking into somebody's house. It's, it's level. But one thing I noticed just prior to any build that might happen, that I saw the house that's across the street from that dead end, and the driveway goes in.
That's my house. My house is the one next to it.
Does your driveway, I'm just, as a matter of fact, do your, does your driveway get flooded? I'm just curious. Because it seems like it's an engineering issue prior to anyone going in.
When we first moved in there, yes, my house gets flooded. I do get water. But Alderman Rodriguez came, and he put berms up for me to prevent that. But with the plows, when they come, they keep getting scraped off. So that water keeps coming into my driveway. And we have to kind of, we may do and, like, make the water shift so that it doesn't come into my house. But my basement has flooded because I sit below street level.
Well, the only thing I want to establish is just in general, just from my own opinion and what, from my, what I've seen, there's an engineering issue in that area pre-existing. Is that fair to say?